Good evening and welcome to the November 13th, 2025 Tingsboro Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting, where under the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 11 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the zoning board of appeals will hear requests for variances or special permits. Hearing one, 440 Middlesex Road, Building F, Unit 1, Taco Restaurant. Sing Young Lee, applicant for a special permit under Section 72J, signs in business and industrial districts of the Tingsboro zoning bylaws to install a second frontlit channel letter wall sign measuring 40 inch by 292, as advertised in the Little Sun, September 25th and October 2nd. This is a continuance from the October 9th, 2025. The floor is yours.
Hey, great. Good evening, everyone. So, we have the meeting for last month, and we make some little bit, we made a little bit changes for their sign. And then, the sign, the signage for the logo and the name and the Asian cuisine keeping the same, is the same size as the last month's meeting. The only changes for the, for the, for the sign is the background for the main entrance. So, for last time, the main entrance background is, is LED, looks like the LED light box is the whole panel would be light up for the new draw, new proposal. So, we will have the ACM panel, we also with the decoration light to, for the background. So, it's a black color background with the, with the strip light for the, to make some decoration for the background. I think keeping the same, the only difference is just the background.
Yeah, before the, the background was all lit, was, and now it's just the strip lights?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Request motion to waive the reading of the abouters list?
We already did that. The last one.
Is there any abouters present? None. You want to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion.
I think that was fulfill the obligation of our last month's meeting.
Yep.
And she did a very good presentation last month, and carried through. So, we were very pleased with the outcome. So, I'm very much in favor of granting them.
Okay.
Same.
I have a voice here?
Yes.
I agree.
Okay. Then entertain a motion.
Let's see, I've got the original.
Yeah, I don't have the original.
Anybody want to take it?
I don't have the original packet.
Here's the original packet.
It's a variance or a special permit?
It was special permit.
Special permit to allow for a second sign?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for 440 Middlesex Road, Building F, Unit 1, Taco Restaurant, under the provisions of the Tingsboro zoning bylaws, for a special permit to add a second sign to the frontage, to install a second frontlit channel letter wall sign measuring 40 inches by 292 inches.
For submitted plans as of 11/13.
For submitted plans of 11/13.
And we're going to use these as the plan of record.
The record. Yep. All right.
I'd second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Unanimous. When are you guys opening?
Probably after eight months. For now, he's doing the renovation inside.
All right, I'm excited.
Good job.
Welcome to town.
Thank you so much. Great job.
My name is Sharon, my family own the business.
Yep, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Hearing number two, 59 Althea Ave, map 53, parcel 53-0. Stephen Putnan, applicant for a special permit under Section 6.3, non-conforming use of structures, residential dwelling, and any other permit relief as may be required under the Tingsboro zoning bylaws to raise the existing structure and build a new, single-family dwelling advertised in the Little Sun, October 30th and November 6th, 2025. Request a motion to waive the abouters list?
Motion to waive the reading of the abouters list.
Second.
Is there?
All those in favor?
Any abouters here? Okay. So, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I don't know, I suppose it's pretty straightforward, but I want to tear down the existing structure, and that current structure is in violation of the setback from the street, and the proposed will meet that setback. Other than that, you know, typical septic, decommission the existing, which isn't much of a septic at all.
Right.
New well and driveway.
Just give us a minute or two to look at the plans.
I don't think I had an elevation view. Was an elevation view part of the packet? Is this a single fam, a single story or a two-story?
Two-story.
Two-story? And it's a two-bedroom?
Yeah.
What it looks like? I've got top-down.
Yeah, I have a plan view and framing.
Yep.
Well, I don't have a side, side view.
And the trusses, so elevation, side elevation. Yeah, none of that.
And I have a structural, but I don't have a floor layout. I was wondering if that was part of the plan originally submitted? In other words, in other words, I can't really tell what it looks like from, from the street. Do you, do you have a?
I don't have one with me. I thought it was included in there.
Do you have anything that you can email to Pam?
Yeah.
If you can email it to her now, we can bring it up on the screen.
Oh, no, I don't have my laptop with me, sorry.
I think we're going to need some variances here too, as well.
Yep.
This is an R1 district.
But we have to verify the height, number of rooms.
Yeah.
So, that's kind of a second point. Would you be open to following the two channels? We're trying to not have a meeting, but we can, we can talk about it. We can keep it open, but we can take like a straw hole view.
Yeah.
To what we think, right now, to give him some inclination as to. So, I would be looking for like a side view plan, and also the floor plan in the interior, and put that all together with your foundation plans and with your, your plan of record. Personally, I've, I've just gone down that neighborhood with Google Earth, and I've checked out the surrounding. This seems to be definitely fitting with the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Setting it back away from the street, it's a little close, that's, that's better. However, you get a little closer to the lake, so that's, it's like a trade-off.
So, you want to make Conservation happy?
Conservation's got to be happy.
They've already put in comments.
They're already happy.
Yeah, I saw that in the comments.
So, I, I would say as long as we can confirm the type of house, the elevation and the number of rooms, number of bedrooms, I'd be, I'd be all, pretty much all set with this.
Yeah, we've done a lot of these.
Yeah.
Definitely an improvement to the neighborhood. I do think we're going to grant you a couple of variances as well to make sure that you meet all your dimensional requirements.
Okay. It looks like it's, it's under 20% increase, whatever, for square footage, so. And it's in a two-story zone, so, two stories allowed. Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Okay, do we want to read?
What does, what does everybody else think?
Well, do you want to read the comments?
Yeah, let's read the comments and get as much as we can done.
Done?
Yep.
So, can I get a volunteer to read the comments for me?
I can read the comments. Okay.
Of the boards and departments?
From the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission has issued a valid order of conditions, minor stormwater management permit, and approved site plan for the proposed project. The order of conditions expires 8/28/2029. Minor SWMP expires 8/28/2027. No additional concerns at this time. From the Health Director, the Board of Health has received a septic plan for a two-bedroom. The plan has been approved. From the Assessors Department, assessors have no adverse comments. From the Building Department, the Building Department has no adverse comments. From the Fire Department, no concerns from Fire Department. From Sewer, the property is not connected to sewer, there are no concerns. From the Tax Collector's Office, the Tax Office has no concerns.
Excellent.
And one of the other bigger reasons is that we would use those set of plans as part of your folder, so that we could actually go by those plans, and the building inspector will know what he's looking at during construction, but.
So, are you a man of molten?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'd need a motion to file for a continuance?
Mr. Chair, may I make a motion to continue this case for the December meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
December 11th.
Thanks.
Have a good night. Okay, hearing three, 394 Middlesex Road, Epigram Brewery, Mount 12, parcel 35-0, Epigram BEW, applicant for a variance under Section 7 dot 2 dot L, signs in a business 3 district, and any other permit relief that may be required under the Tingsboro zoning bylaws to increase the height of the existing sign and modify this sign to include a backlit letter message board advertised in the Little Sun, October 30th and November 6th, 2025. Are there any abouters here? Seeing none. Floor is yours.
Evening. My name's Bill Curry, and I want you to know that many years ago, I was sitting there on the zoning board here in Tingsboro, back in the Kevin O'Connor days.
Wow.
And we used to start every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yep.
And times have changed. And we used to be upstairs in the old, in the old town hall.
The old town hall.
Yeah. It was always creaky floors, and you're always concerned about that building at that time. But, so yes, we, we'd like to put a sign up with lettering below. We, I, actually, we'd wanted to put an illuminated sign, a digital sign, but unfortunately, the town ordinance doesn't allow it. So, so this is the alternative option for us. I've tried to come up with a sign that meets our needs and is not, not, not unattractive or, or, you know, too, too big. There are quite a few of these signs on Middlesex Road now, and they're all different sizes and so forth. So, I think this is a, this is an attractive one, and it will serve the purpose for us. I believe I've given you all the information that's requested. The only thing that has come up on this was a letter was forwarded to me yesterday from National Grid. Craig Kimball from the Surveying Department had expressed a concern about any safety risk because it's close to the power lines, and he was concerned about that. I spoke to him today, and he said that he was using a satellite image of the property, and he couldn't see our sign on it, so he didn't know where our sign was, and he was just concerned that in the, during the installation phase of the sign, that he didn't want the boom hitting the wires.
Yep.
So, I explained to him that we're 100, over 100 feet from the, walking along to the, to the closest wire, and the wire's 100 feet in the air, and the boom that we will use is a 25-foot boom, and will be coming in from the parking lot, which is on the opposite side of where the wires are. So, he said, okay, no problem. I asked him if he could forward a, a note of our conversation for your records, and he said he would, but I don't know how long that's going to take. So, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, I do need a motion to waive the reading of the abouters list?
Motion to waive the reading of the abouters list.
You need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 There was no, nobody present. So, we can close, motion to close the public portion, and we'll discuss.
Motion to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's discuss. That was you, Joe.
Looking at the, the map, the layout.
Is this a B1 district?
Yes, I believe so. Let me, B3.
No, B3.
B3. Okay.
The only thing I noticed was, right now, pulling out of the parking lot, the sign now, kind of almost blocks the view when you're pulling out. With it being elevated, it actually helps in safety. Good to know.
Being new to this, can I ask, how does this vary from the zoning laws?
So, this is the existing, this is what's permitted, is 25 square feet, eight feet above. We are given a discretion, we're allowed to go sign up no more than 50 square feet and 25 feet if it is determined the sign will not be incongruous in the B1, B3 district.
Okay.
Nor in jurisdictions of traffic and safety concerns. I, I'm in agreement, the higher the signs, especially with the snow, typically better. And this is a large building. I mean, it doesn't seem out of sort with the size of this building.
So, we have a request of comments. Would you like me to read the request of comments?
Yes, please.
Okay. Building Department has no adverse comments, no concerns from Fire Department, Tax Office has no concerns, and Assessors have no adverse comments. We have one memo that is from Greg, Craig Kimball, National Grid, which was mentioned. I'd like to read that into the record. Good afternoon, Pam. After reviewing the Epigram Brew's application for a proposed new sign located at 394 Middlesex Road, I have a major concern about the height of the sign in the application. The proposed new sign will be 15 feet tall and constructed in the same place of the existing sign. A 15-foot sign will pose a serious safety risk being so close to the overhead power lines. Can you please let the appropriate parties know that the National Grid does not feel comfortable with the proposed sign being installed in the same location as the existing one? And that was sent out on November 10th. And then from Mr. Curry, I, Pam getting in touch with Craig and sending him this picture. I believe the signs meet all town setback requirements. It is 108 feet from being below the nearest power line, and, which looks to be about 100 feet in the air. The power line is 100 feet in the air. I'm guessing this might be a standard objection position for anything near the properties. I'll try to get that resolved. And so, a comment was made that they, did they come back with another statement saying that it was okay with these photos?
I, I sent them the information, and I had a conversation with them, telephone conversation with them today, and he, and he explained to me that their issue was that during the installation of the sign, that with the crane that we might use potentially bump against the wires or do any damage to the wires, and that was their concern. And I explained to them, you know, the distance that it is, and that it's only a 15-foot sign, and it's a 25-foot boom we're using, and we're coming in from the opposite side, our parking, our parking lot side, that it's, it's not an issue at all. And he, he said, yeah, he said, okay, now I understand it better. And I said, if, if, would you be good enough to? Now, he didn't say to me, no problem. I just said, would you be good enough to send something in writing so that the board and we have something for our files that, you know, you understand, and, you know, that we move forward with this, because we don't want to hold this up because of, for this reason, of course.
There's also a big elevation difference on this property, like the property, the power lines in the back are probably much higher, much closer to the ground than it is at the street level.
Yeah. See, I'm trying to pull up, so I have Dream Dyna pulled up. So, the high tension wires are shown here, but the street power is another section. Is that on the other side of the street? I know the pump station by far well.
Does the picture show you on the other side of the street?
Yeah, I can't tell if that's on.
Yeah, that's on the other side.
That's on the other, other side of the street?
Yep.
So.
And if, you know, if you look at that picture, it's deceiving. That car looks like it's, it's, it's on the far side of the pole, but it's actually about 30 feet this side of the pole. It's just the, the angle that the picture was taken at. That car is about halfway from our sign to where the closest wire is. I mean, that's how far away it is.
What's the square footage on the sign? So, the variance request is from 8 to 15.
So, it's 8, 9, and 3/4. And then it looks like it's?
Eight and a half.
3.4, 10, 3, 10, 7.8?
7.6, if you go decimal. So, it's 66.5 square feet. And the top of it will be 15 feet elevation.
Yep.
So, 66.5. And we, currently in B3, it's 50. Yep, 50 is allowed.
Freestanding signs, retail complexes of 50,000 square feet or more, a floor area with three or more businesses.
I'm looking under Section 72J, freestanding signs, single business on a lot. So, we're about 16 and a half, 16.5 square feet over.
The discretion. Yeah.
You're taking the 15? Wait, so you count on the post as the sign?
No.
No?
No, I just said 15 was the top, top of elevation.
Oh, yeah.
15 was, so, we're allowed up to 25 feet.
Which is fine.
In elevation.
Yeah.
So, that's good. The, the height is no problem. It's just the number of, I guess it's number of lines of text. So, if you take the 66.5, subtract the 50, we're 16.5, 16 and a half feet over. So, if it's about eight feet wide, we're two feet up into the five lines, however you want to look at it. So, you'd be left with approximately one foot 10 of the?
Lines.
Lines.
Without shrinking the Epigram sign above.
You'd have, probably have two lines if they're a little shrunk and a little smaller.
It's not all too helpful because of digital.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
At first, when I saw this case come up, I thought it was a digital sign board, and I said that was.
Yeah.
But, but now I see this, I, so. What are other people thinking? Is there any way to accommodate the size requirements, or are you dead set on?
No, that's why I'm here. I mean, if you look at the, the sign, it's, it's, the name sign and, and the lettered sign are the same size, and if, it looks better that way.
Yep.
And it, you know, I mean, I, I could have asked for the sign to be bigger, with letters on it, but it wouldn't.
No.
Wouldn't have looked right. So, I mean, that's, that's why we come up with that.
This is our new sign ordinance that is just coming, coming into play for 2025. We're really trying to stick to the, the original intent. A lot of work went into rewriting some of these rules and regulations, and looking what other towns are doing. And this went through before the town meeting, was accepted by the Attorney General.
How, what's the square footage on this building?
Building's about 15,000. That's, that's the, the ground level, the ground area. It's, there's a second floor, so it's.
So, you've got a, an attached sign, right, on the building?
We do.
Yep.
We do.
And you've got the freestanding sign.
Yeah.
It's up front.
I think if you look at, as this sign compares to some of the other lettered signs on Middlesex Road, probably is the best match for the size of the building, and, I mean, it's.
Well, there are a, a multitude of changes in the signs ordinance. We used to have a patchwork quilt.
Yeah.
And that was very unreadable, and didn't make a lot of sense to a lot of people.
Right.
And it was open to a lot of interpretation.
Right.
This has just come into effect, and this is probably one of the first ones outside of the Taco Restaurant that we had to deal with. And, but their, their signage was on the building. How large is the sign on your building? That may not, that may not coincide with what our size requirements.
It's a lettered, it's a lettered.
I, I think it's, I think it's a very nice sign. I think we're just getting, it's just that, just that slightly oversized.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for elevating the signs, especially with everybody flying down Middlesex.
How does the sign compare to, say, the strip along, on the Nashua side of the road?
Well, we can't compare it to Nashua. They, they have a lot of electronic sign.
Larger signs.
They've got sign proliferation. They're not.
So, there's a sort of spread?
We have, we have two electronic sign boards on the highway right now, and there's, basically, it's, it's limited to those two signs now because of the new ordinances. I hate to have to drag this one and be to the letter of the law, though, on, on this case.
I am too, considering it's tucked in, the building is. I am too, considering it's tucked in, the building is, it's not really readily visible as you're coming down from Nashua.
Right.
And um, it is a larger building like we ran into this with top granite, granite, the one up on the hill where we had to really kind of consider what we were looking at for.
I was overruled on that case, if you remember. That was the the old, the sole dissenting vote.
Yeah.
I remember that one.
I'd I'd be way.
They're no longer.
I'd be way more comfortable if you were willing to remove one section of lettering.
What does that mean?
So like you have four lines instead of five. Like meet in the middle? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, just like raise raise it up one.
Well, looking, looking at that picture, there's four lines now.
Right. If you could go to three.
Well, it says, it says five lines of six inch copy, so it doesn't jive, right? My 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 mind says five lines of six inch copy.
Right, yeah, all all of us does. So and it winds, what's pictured is four lines.
Yeah, one, two, no, there's.
If we could lose the bottom line, that would bring it closer to the fifty square feet. Do you know what I'm saying?
Would that be go from the five line to the four line?
Yeah.
Okay. So if you want to, I mean, I I'm fine if you want to give us an approval based upon four line sign. I I that you can make that work, sure. And I'll get back to you what the dimension change might be based on that.
Eight inches, ten inches.
Yeah.
It would, so right now, I'm I'm thinking of somewhere like sixty rough down and dirty with sixty six square feet or sixty eight square feet.
Yeah, so this whole white section is three feet, ten inches. So if you divide that.
Okay, she's gonna do the actual math.
Okay.
So what's the number gonna be? Instead of fifty, what's it gonna be?
Well, it's it's three feet, ten inches is the white section, so that's.
By what we're looking at now is four lines.
Yeah, so three.
Well, you gotta divide by four.
Plus ten. Yeah, divide by four times by three, it's thirty four point five.
Okay.
Inches versus three.
Just under three feet.
Yeah, just under three feet.
So that'll make that seven feet by.
Oh. If you you make that three, two three feet, right, it's gonna be three feet. You're gonna lose like ten inches, you said. You lose one line.
Yeah, so that's forty six, divide by four, eleven point five. Thirty four point five. Do you lose, you lose a foot?
Joe, does it say in there what the uh height of the letters are?
Six inch copy.
Six inch copy.
Six inch.
Yep.
So it would be eighteen inches, right? The sign would then be eighteen inches.
Yeah.
Correct?
Well, that's if you uh.
You went for three, you went with three lines, it'd be.
Six would be twenty four.
Right, but you're asking me to take it down a line, so that would be, it would be eighteen inches. And the width of the sign is, what does it show for the width of the?
Eight, nine and three quarters.
The width is what?
Eight foot nine and three quarters.
Okay, so by eighteen inches, what you got?
Okay, three foot ten minus three foot ten minus eighteen inches. Six, forty six, forty six, minus eighteen.
Yes, yeah.
Like that, so it'll be twenty eight times seven five. Way of twenty four.
Down and dirty, right? If it's sixty eight, you're subtracting eight square feet off if it's a foot.
You know, I appreciate you working with us and um, and I also can appreciate that you've got new ordinances and you're trying not to deviate from keep people within the new order. But if you look at the aesthetics of the sign, if the lettered sign is not the same size as the sign above it, aesthetically, it's not gonna look good. And so, you know, what? What's the harm? I mean, isn't it better to have it look good?
Well, it's greater than twenty percent. What you're asking for.
That's why we're at, that's why we're at the zoning board though, right? That's why I'm here, because it's 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 above the zoning law.
So you have to plead a hardship. Why, why do you need that?
Well.
Besides looks.
Hey, I don't wanna say, I I just did a quick, man, here, I don't know if I'm correct, but let me, let me just do it one more time when when you guys talking about it. Uh, but yeah, generally, all we're talking about at this board is setbacks, square footage, photography and soil conditions, right?
Yep.
But we add the governing board for.
Signs.
Signs. Hang on one second. So can I just go again? So you're gonna be removing eighteen inches from this?
No, 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 sir, no.
It's gonna be total eighteen inches. Okay, hang.
Right now, you're you're if it's four lines of six inches, that's twenty four inches.
Yep.
You're asking to remove six inches, so it'd be eighteen inches.
So it's gonna be eighteen inches.
Right.
From the black epigram on down. Okay, then we still have three foot ten above it. And we're going eight foot nine and three quarters along the top.
Okay.
Okay, let me do this again. So eighteen inches. So that's one and a half feet. So we're gonna go from three foot ten to one point five on the bottom. Just so you know, so you're splitting it, right? So my eighteen inches, so I'm I'm left at one point five feet on text. And I add it to the three foot ten. So that means the whole sign is now five point three three in feet, five point three three in feet vertical from the bottom of the text to the top. I multiply that, five point three three. Bear with me here, times eight and three quarters.
And he's in the fifty.
He's within fifty.
Right.
He's forty six point six four.
Taking eighteen inches is not gonna give you three lines of lettering.
Yeah, you know, I mean. I mean, this, I mean, and I I I I can speak this way because I've sat where you've sat and, you know, that was why our job was. Our job was to look at what the what the what the zoning laws were and and to try and say, okay, there's this exception to the zoning law makes sense.
Yep.
For for the town, for the citizens, for the homeowner, for the business owners, does it make sense?
So so you're quickly amenable to decreasing the number.
I'm not quickly amenable to it. I I would do it if it's if it's if I have to do it, but I I have to say, Joe, I disagree with doing it. I I I'm looking at the sign. Is it gonna kill us to take a a line off of one row off there? No, it's not gonna kill us, but it's not, the sign's not gonna look as good. And you know, I mean, our building, we spent a lot of money to make that building look good inside and out. And particularly on the outside, and we maintain it with with the landscaping and there's no lights out on the signs. I mean, we we do a good job and we're good, we're good for the town and and are we? There's no, I can't see of any perceivable negative reason to not accept the sign the way it is. I mean, I I it's your decision, but I'm just, I'm sat where you're sat and I.
It's the board, it's it's the board. It's not, it's not one person.
No, no, I know, no, 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 it's it's the board's decision, but.
So uh, taking that down would to one and a half feet, that that would be two lines of text at this size. Even though it says five, it would be, it would be cutting about half.
Right.
Yeah.
Just so everybody's aware, these bottoms, make make believe those two lines are gone. So he's just showing two lines of this existing sign. If he could move up the epigram brewery, one more line, he could have three lines.
That epic, that epigram brew is an already made sign.
Right.
So we're just moving.
Repurposing their existing sign, yeah.
It's their existing sign.
Adding to it.
Right.
I mean, the whole point of the text is you're trying to inform the public of what the the business is trying, upcoming events and.
Right.
Uh, whatever the slingo is or whatever they do on Thursday nights, the music bingo.
And we have a fundraiser there tonight for um, American Society for the Blind. And, you know, if we wanted to put something on there.
Right, exactly.
It would be great to not to be, not to be abbreviating lines of words, so people are trying to figure out what do you, what what he is saying, what's up here.
Do you have an idea what this sign would be, would look like if it was fifty square feet or or let's say fifty one or fifty two?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be balanced.
Exactly, but do you have a, but do you have a concept of what it would look like to present to the board?
I think it would be to the existing sign, what's eight and three quarters and three foot ten? Like, what's the existing sign?
Right now, I've got, first of all, I'm looking at the drawing and it says five lines of six inch copies. Right now, the drawing is a little bit funky, right? It's a little bit off. It's telling me something different.
What's the square foot of the black sign?
I'm not, you know, I'm just saying.
I'm gonna do that right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to.
Three point eight eight three times, for all intensive purposes, eight point eight eight three. The existing sign right now is just under thirty five square.
This is thirty five square feet. So that would basically leave him one to one and a half lines below.
Right.
If that, which is useless for.
Right.
I'd be. Well, I'm not gonna say what's good or bad, what's useless or not.
Right.
I'm I'm saying, I'm I'm saying I'm looking at the specification, right? I have to start from this angle.
Yeah, you have to start from the fifty square feet.
I'm looking at this angle.
So the proposed is almost seventy square feet. I'm trying to use round numbers here. The if I lost fifty square feet. So it's like a forty percent increase in the sign. We could get it down somewhere where it was twenty, I would feel comfortable.
Till sixty. Is there a significant cost to kind of redesign, to shrink the whole box?
No, I I it would probably be less, less expensive for the sign. The design wouldn't.
You see what I'm saying? Like, the whole box itself, keep the number of lines.
So you're saying keep the height, but just shrink it in so it's, it looks like a two.
Take it.
Just take it in narrower.
Well, take the whole thing, like, take the four corners.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna change the top, right? Because that's our existing. You're saying move in this, move in this edge this way and move this edge in this way and maybe, and then you can get your five lines of text, they'd be shorter lines. It all depends on how much writing you're gonna put up there, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Like one word on each line.
Yeah.
Sort of defeats the purpose, but.
I'm trying to understand um. If I sound, if I sound pushy.
And and no, no, and and other times, in other times, when it was a.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, this was submitted with the with the case, right? So I I I believe before the May update in twenty twenty five, it was written a lot less.
Structured.
Structured.
With the discretion, yeah.
Right.
This is brand new on the brand new law.
And but I mean, but even back then, it said, okay, these are the limits for the sign and if you're going to go above that, you know, you have to go before the zoning board and that's basically what we're doing now.
You have to show some sort of hardship, but but a business case use can't be used as a hardship.
But I mean.
I mean, the hardship is.
There's a dozen signs on Middle Six Road and mo- many of them are much bigger than this sign. And so, and 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 then, you know, they they do the job, but they they're not balanced with the with the size of the building and and they, this is very balanced. This is, I mean, if the town were to have hired somebody to say, look, we want a, we want something that looks very pleasing for the town, it looks, you know, it looks good. And if somebody rides by and it doesn't look like it's, you know, Route One in Saugus, that's what they'd come up with is this sign. And that was when when we went to the people to ask them to come up with a design for this sign that we could submit. They they gave us what we asked for.
And then you asked for that size, knowing, knowing that we had this.
No, 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 I asked, I asked for the sign because I wanted to come up. If I looked at what was on the street now and I said, we don't need, we don't need places big as the used car place.
You keep bringing what's up on the street.
Okay.
Okay, for other businesses.
Right.
We're not discussing that. We're discussing what's today, right?
Yeah, those were granted off the board.
What are you trying to accomplish?
Again, we're not discussing, th- this was back months ago when this was rewritten. I'm not gonna discuss what we're trying to accomplish. We already accomplished this. This is already written in stone. This is accepted by the Attorney General. I think what the board is looking for, I know and I respect you quite a bit for being on this board and and I know you know how it operates.
Yep.
And you know how constrained we can be at times, right?
Well.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's it's a little more constrained than it was even ten years ago, five years ago.
Well, we're going back thirty five years.
A compromise type situation that the board would feel comfortable with, like Mr. Chair said, hey, if we could even have fifty one or fifty two square feet, we'd probably go there. It'd be, it'd be close enough, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I.
I think that's a good suggestion.
I appreciate that, but you, but but if 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 you're looking at, you're looking at the guidelines and you're saying, okay, the guidelines are telling us this is what we can do and we're willing to go a little bit more than that, but not quite that far, that's kind of what you're saying to me. Am I correct? You're saying, you're saying we're we're willing to let you, we're willing, we're willing to make a decision to go a little bit beyond what we're.
If you're not willing to meet those criteria, that criteria, that then uh, it's unfortunate.
I think the limiting factor here is is that you're trying to mean reuse the existing sign. So your, your limiting factor here is you have thirty five square feet already for that epigram, the black portion. If you were designing the sign from scratch, you could get to a discretion of fifty five, even if we go sixty, that's ten percent above the existing threshold. Then you'd be able to balance your look up and down to have an equal sized block on the top to the lines on the bottom. So the question.
People probably would be willing to go fifty five. It wouldn't be that noticeable, but it would be fifty five and it would be a variance for that special.
Yeah, but you're committed to keeping the existing signage is I think what the limiting factor here is. Like, we can't change the fact that the top is thirty five square feet.
Yeah.
And that leaves you at best twenty square feet for the.
If we don't do that, then what are the, might as well just take this piece of paper and put it in the trash heap, right?
No, not necessarily.
Where do you start?
Joe, I don't agree with that because, again, that's what the purpose of this board is. The purpose of this board is to say, okay, we're being asked to do something that is not in in the zoning board and we're asked to make an educated favor of the town's benefit and the town's taxpayers ruling about what is, what we can, what we can allow and what we can't allow. And so if you think about it from that perspective and you say, okay, so what's wrong with this sign if we approve this sign the way it is? It's it it's a better safety situation. Now, the sign is raised now. It's a lot easier for people to see. It's 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 an attractive sign. It serves the purpose of this good citizen, business, corporate, citizen, taxpaying organization in town. It's it it's it it looks good. So what's, you know, I mean.
You're not getting the point. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move this case along, either go to a vote or if there's any new evidence to propose, if you would want to withdraw at this time.
Joe, what's, what, what point am I missing, please? If you, don't get frustrated with me, it's, I don't want you to.
I'm not, I'm not gonna discuss that. I'm going by the rules. You keep bringing up the same facts. I just wanna move this along, okay? So we have the rules, we have the regulations, you were aware of them. You're coming in for something that's over and above the rules and regulations. This is not related to setbacks, it's not related to square footage or any kind of uh, you know, other zoning requirement that we that we can easily give variance to. This is a cut in the stone that everybody has to abide by, not just some people. So this is why I'm saying, we should probably finish this up. I'm hearing the same information.
Would you be amenable to making the bottom sign a foot?
Yes.
So instead of three foot ten being two foot ten.
I think it was, I think you proposed one foot, one point five.
Well, what I was, I didn't have this dimension in front of me and we we were.
You were saying eighteen inches.
We were thinking that, no, sir.
Eighteen would only give him two lines of text.
That's right, and it would bring him down to forty six point six four. That's right, and it would bring him down to forty-six point six four square feet, and we wouldn't have to be here.
You misunderstood the eighteen inches. I had asked, I had asked, I didn't have this drawing in front of me. I had said, how many lines were there? And you said that it shows four lines, it says five, but it shows four lines, and they're six inches each. And would you be agreeable to take, take a line off?
I'm going by square footage.
Would you be agreeable to take a line off? I'm just trying to tell you where the eighteen inches is.
You can make your, your sign changed at any minute. You could put fifteen lines. I don't know what that means. I'm going by the dimensions on your drawing, your drawing. That's what I'm going by.
I, I, just for a point, the eighteen inches, not take eighteen inches off the sign. The eighteen inches was that if there were four lines and there were six inches each, that's twenty-four inches. If we cut it down to eighteen inches, that would accommodate the...
So that's one line, eighteen inches is one line.
But if you look at the dimensions here, it's actually, it's actually forty-six inches for those four lines. So if we divide that by four...
It's eleven point five.
Right, we'd be taking that off the sign, and I would be agreeable to that.
Which is, let's call it a foot.
Okay.
So make the bottom sign two foot ten, top side is three foot ten, that gets you on, in my head, like sixty square feet.
Too big.
I'd agree to it.
I'm okay with sixty square feet. If the goal is here to notify the public of what your events are, without, if you create something that's too small, you're gonna create a public safety hazard if you're trying to cram in all the, the lettering.
That's a business use case. That's, that's not what we're here for. We're here for the size of the sign. That's what we're here for. We gotta stay focused on that, okay? Because this'll be this case.
It'll set the precedent for the next one.
Other month, it's gonna be another case, and then another case. And we've been down that road. We know that. You brought up that other company.
There is no consideration to taking, restarting the whole top at all. I mean, if you, you weren't looking for a balanced approach to your sign.
I, it's expensive.
Sixty square feet would be twenty percent.
Twenty percent over.
Twenty percent over. I'm, I'm okay with that. And the lines don't have to be six inches. I mean, you can adjust accordingly to whatever lines make sense for the sign.
I'm inclined to agree with the sixty.
Max.
Because I believe that location with the building setback really requires something more substantial. And I feel that, I don't know, I was talking with my wife about it. She said, we never knew it was there until, how long? Been buying it, been buying it so many times.
Yeah, if you're coming down from Nashville, it's hard.
It's a great thing to have that sign with, with, for that building. I think it may need the extra, you know. But I would say that further along the road, I would be less inclined to give the...
We don't have a stipulation as to how far the sign is away from the building, or how far.
Right.
As to the sign. We don't have a graduated sign or incremental sign size. This is it.
I'm interested in learning more about that part.
If the sign is made smaller, yeah, you'd probably use smaller lettering, and that's gonna be defeating your purpose anyway, right? So you're saying, well, you want to have a good view of the sign and the lettering. It may be a distraction that people are driving by at forty-five miles an hour, and they're trying to read five lines of text, then it could be a problem, especially with neighbors up the street where people are coming out with different products up the street that we all know about. Your thoughts, Nikki? You've been awfully quiet.
I'm just very concerned about the slippery slope.
Yeah.
Because I can, I have a feeling that, and it's not that I don't want to necessarily benefit any businesses here in Tingsborough, I'm just concerned that it's just gonna open a can of worms. We start being more courteous to one business over the other, and so on and so forth. So that's my, my concern. And the attorney in me is reading a legit interpretation of it.
That's why we got all redone.
I'd be okay with a slight variation. I can't say for certain in this moment if sixty feet sits well with me, but I'm just, it just says of no more than fifty square feet, that's what. So, it's a toughie.
Would you be amenable to file a continuance till next month?
For what end? I mean, if, if there's, if, if the position of people on the board, I mean, how could I, what?
What, having been in business, okay, I would go back home and go, let me get a price for a small, a smaller width sign, and see what the price is. To kind of get it close.
Okay, so, we already own this epigram sign. It was an expensive sign, and, and it, it can't be shrunk. And I can't throw it out and start all over again. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with shrinking the lettering sign down. And, you know, and I'd like to walk out tonight with an understanding of what that has to be to make everybody satisfied, and, 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 and we've completed this process.
I mean, I think the position of three of the members is sixty square feet is the max that we're willing to do.
Right.
And is this a super majority or a simple majority?
Hey, well, this is a super majority or a simple majority?
Three out of five or four out of five?
Four.
It's four out of five.
Okay. So can we, can I ask for a vote on accepting the sign? And we'll take that bottom sign, and we'll make it smaller, we'll crop it up, so it's not three foot ten now, it's, it's two foot ten.
So that gets you to the sixty. Do you want to make the motion?
I mean, that's the, that's the concern, yeah.
You're making a motion without seeing the new plan, and getting the new dimensions.
The suggestion would be to file a continuance, come up with a new, present with a new drawing.
Okay. So would, would the recommendation of the board be to go back with a new drawing that shows the sign at two foot, the lettered part at two foot ten?
Get it as close to fifty as you can. So that's sixty. So you have three on the board now that sixty is the max we'll allow, allow. So if you can get it closer to fifty-two, fifty-three...
No max of fifty-five, which is a ten percent threshold
Right.
above the...
I think you'd give an unanimous vote at, you know, lower fifties, mid-fifties.
Yeah.
And in terms of the distance from the electric lines?
That's, it looks like that's a moot point. It looks like it's far enough away.
Having that in writing would help also, though, for the next meeting.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And next meeting's on your left.
Yes, to request the motion.
So you want to come next month, or do you think you need longer?
Right, but my question is, is what do you need from me by when, so that I can appear at that next meeting? Need anything in advance from me before a certain date, so that I can bring this before the board on the eleventh?
Just two weeks, two weeks prior to the meetings.
So you need a new drawing two weeks prior to the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you request a continuance? Okay, I need a motion?
Motion to continue hearing number three to our next meeting of December eleventh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's sort of get a little work next month. Yeah, we have two of them, at least.
Joe, when was that?
Joe, I understand, I understand. I've sat there.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Just the history of that point.
We'll talk.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October ninth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, is there any new business topics that the chair did not reasonably anticipate to be discussed? No? Okay. Any old business? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close the hearing of November thirteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard. Thank you.